We call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Miles, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for this day that you have allowed us to see, Father. We pray that as we conduct business for the city, Lord, that you will give us wisdom, knowledge, and discernment to make the best decisions, Lord God. We pray, Lord God, that you would just touch each city official that is here, touch those who are not here, Lord God. Help us, Lord, to make this city the best that it can be. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I would like to add Resolution 1014 to our agenda and move it to the front, please.
Second. The motion, the second, is to add Resolution 1014 as our first item. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution 1014.
Memorializing the late Thomas Kenneth Nelson, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to his family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Resolution 1014 be adopted on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass, adopt Resolution 1014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
We'll have the clerk read the resolution, then we'll have our discussion.
Whereas, on February 25, 2014, the entire Lima land community was saddened by the death of Thomas Kenneth Nelson, former Lima policeman and outstanding citizen. And whereas, after graduating from South High School in 1943, Thomas Nelson drafted into the United States Army, where he retired as a staff sergeant in 1946, then attending Kentucky State College, where he received a Bachelor of Arts degree in mathematics. And whereas, in 1952, Thomas took the Civil Service exam to become a police officer, having made the highest score of all participants, he was hired. He spent several years walking the beat in downtown Lima as a foot patrolman, and later years, he rode a cruiser patrolling various sections of the city, where he was well respected by the residents. In 1973, he was appointed to the position of lieutenant. And whereas, his dedication to the Lima community was evident by his involvement with the Internal Order of Police, a life member of NAACP, Bradfield Center, and Samuel W. Clark Balsamic Lodge, where he was a 32nd degree mason. He was an active member of the Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church, where he served as a teacher of teenage boys, financial chairman for over 50 years, and secretary of the church's brotherhood. And whereas, it is the desire of this council to recognize the value of contributions of Thomas Kenneth Nelson to the city of Lima. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Lima, that the Lima City Council hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Thomas Kenneth Nelson, which have and will continue to benefit our citizens, and that the council on behalf of the entire community expresses its condolences to his family and friends.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I have a couple of things there. First of all, I thank all the folks that came out for Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson also was a Furrow Williams Award back in 2005. He also made it to our Hall of Fame 2012. So I just want to put that out there. But I had an opportunity to meet Mr. Nelson. I was one of the youngest guys in the Frontier Organization, and I was the district secretary. One thing he always kept, he kept track of everything I do. He got a book when I first started in politics. He kept track of everything. And I mean, he always had very, very kind words and different things to tell me about. We're gonna miss a pioneer. And I know, I used to let people know that Tom Nelson was a lieutenant at the police department, when people said, everybody just knew Chief Davenport, but we had Tom Nelson and we had other Black police officers. And he was a lieutenant there. And he never went to recognition, though. That's one thing about him. He always said, "Nah, dear, you don't do that." But he was so nice to me, him and his wife both, and the church family, Reverend Stevenson back there, his lovely wife. And I know you guys are gonna miss it. I know he brought the whole, most of the Brotherhood organization that he was involved in is out there, too. I just crunched up a little bit, because I miss him so much. The kind words he all, when he see me, he give me hope on things, on the war. He's telling me some stories about when he was on the beat, when they walked the beat. And I mean, I could sit there, we was in Springfield, and meet him at the hotel, and I just sat down there when we had a meeting with the Frontier. He sat there and told me a whole bunch of stuff that went on. And I mean, I just sat there and listened to him. They so excited. And well missed. And I know his wife could not make it tonight.
She here?
Oh, she here. Ms. Nelson here tonight. I didn't get to see her when she walked in. But Ms. Nelson, he's a great man. Where's she at?
Back street there.
Back there. Ms. Nelson, he's a great man. And you guys are. And one thing I want to say, he loved the grandkids. And he has some great grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Resolution 1014 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Mrs. Nelson, I'll bring you the resolution.
In the absence of the mayor and President Nixon, and I notice that the chief of police is here and present now, on behalf of my deceased husband, I want to thank you for the commendations highlighting what he did in behalf of the citizens of Lima. I can say this, he served the community in all sincerity for 33 years. He valued the friendship of all with whom he worked. He had a sense of humor. He had kind disposition. He also lived very, very carefully, because he didn't want his name through the mud. Even when his short-term memory failed him, he never lost the pleasant memories of his longtime cruiser boat partners, Louis Hallington and Tony DePauling. He treasured the memories of the annual Canadian fishing trip for more than 20 years with his fellow workers. He truly loved what he was doing. Just a case in point, he turned down a job offer in Dayton, Ohio, which offered more than the $210 a month he was receiving, because he liked what he was doing. He was retiring for 29 years, and he still stayed in touch with his fellow workers. So on behalf of all of you who saw fit to honor him in this way, I want to say thank you and may God bless each and every one of you.
Notice is hereby given that on the 21st day of April 2014 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers located at 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held on the following matter: modification of the applicable city zoning code for parcels abutting South Main Street from the Ottawa River south to Fourth Street, Lima, Allen County, Ohio, to include regulations for a zoning overlay. South Main Street overlay design review district, which will be enacted as Chapter 1272 of Lima Codified Ordinances. This petition is initiated by Kiwi Corners Development Corporation and has been endorsed by the City Planning Commission. Any interested person or persons desiring to be heard on said matter may do so at the time and place here in specified. The reports, maps, and other documents pertaining to the above request are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council and are open to public inspection.
Is there anybody that would like to speak to the zoning overlay plan for South Main Street? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Second time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the zoning overlay plan for South Main Street? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. For the final call, is there anybody who would like to speak to the issue of the zoning overlay plan for South Main Street? Seeing none, I'll declare the public. Seeing Amy Odom slowly making her way, frantically waving, trying to get my attention. Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I just wanted to recognize the efforts of the Kiwi Corners Development Corporation and review for the public, again, the very lengthy process that has occurred to make this South Main corridor overlay plan a reality and brought to you this evening. In 2007, actually, seven years ago, the Weed and Seed Steering Committee proposed a master plan for South Main, starting at basically Town Square going to Fourth Street, to try to put some opportunity, quite frankly, for that area to be developed in a way that made sense, that was attractive, and would complement the new development occurring on Fourth Street. Each of you have a packet that outlines this process. There were meetings held again in 2011, four community meetings held to get input from all the residents. In 2012, based upon the input from those community meetings, the project area was redrawn to include only those parcels fronting South Main Street, to basically focus on parcels that abut South Main to make improvements and provide some consistency in the plan from Town Square to Fourth. In 2013, last year, council did approve the plan by resolution, but there needed to basically be enacting ordinances. That was approved by council, you've already approved it, but the actual legislation for the specifics of the zoning and design are before you. Tonight, just the zoning portion. What you have attached to your ordinance are basically the final drafts of the language that would provide a overlay to the corridor. You have also received a letter from the Kiwi Corners Development Corporation voicing their support, and I know that there are members here in the audience from the Kiwi Corners corridor area that were here to learn a bit more about it. Basically, it is the plan with some minor revisions, again, making it constrained to the parcels abutting the corridor itself. So I just wanted to do that brief review and thank everyone, the property owners, the Kiwi Corners Development Corporation, Mr. Glenn, and Ms. Adams and others who've been involved with this process for over seven years, and I'll look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the zoning overlay for South Main Street? For the final call, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the zoning overlay plan for South Main Street? Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Next is privilege of the floor, Mr. David Adams.
David Adams, 430 South Charles Street, Lima. I'm here, thank you, first of all, for this privilege of the floor. I will endeavor to stay within the three-minute limit. I have three items, actually, briefly. First two are events that are upcoming this Wednesday, April 23. The first will be at the Chamber of Commerce at noon. It is the 114th Dialogue for Public Officials in Allen County in Lima. We will meet from 12 until 1 o'clock, sharing a meal and an opportunity to talk with one another. Our keynote speaker will be Beth Seibert from the Ottawa River Coalition, and she will be speaking to the question, how can we all help to improve water quality in the Ottawa River? Public officials, including, of course, city councilors and other city administrative officers, are cordially invited to attend. The second event, also on Wednesday, April 23, is in the evening at 7 o'clock at the Red Cross. The League of Women Voters of the Lima area and the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship are co-sponsoring a public informational forum on the Bill of Rights. Our three panelists will be Dr. William Angel, professor of political science at Ohio State University at Lima, Professor Scott Gerber of the Ohio Northern University College of Law, and Judge Jeffrey Reed, the Allen County Court of Common Pleas. They will be addressing briefly various aspects of the history and the implementation of the Bill of Rights in the United States and the judicial system. And then the floor will be open for comments and questions from those who are attending. All of you are cordially invited to attend that event. There will be light refreshments. It is free and open to the public. That's at 7:00, Wednesday, April 23, at the Red Cross. The third reason for my requesting privilege of the floor is to celebrate with you the annual April event, the entire month of April. It is National Poetry Month in the United States, as many of you will undoubtedly know. And it is my wish to share with you a bit of motivational poetry from great Alfred Lord This is a poem called Ulysses. It's from, the last dozen lines or so, from a poem called Ulysses. In this poem, the poet is taking the voice of Ulysses, who has returned to Ithaca after 20 years' absence for the Trojan War and his adventures coming back home again. But he is wearying of the life in Ithaca and wishes again to be on the sea with his crew and into the latest adventure. These are lines which are often quoted as motivational poetry. Some of you who are movie fans will perhaps remember that Judi Dench, at the end of the last James Bond film called Skyfall, quotes these same lines when she finds herself, as M., with James Bond, in a very tight situation, the bad guy's closing in. And here they are. These are addressed to city councilors and city administrators. "Come, my friends, tis not too late to seek a better world. Push off and sitting well in order, smite the sounding furrows; for my purpose holds to sail beyond the sunset and the baths of all the western stars until I die. It may be that the gulf shall wash us down; it may be that we will touch the happy isles and see the great Achilles whom we knew. Though much is taken, much remains; and though we are not now that strength that in old days moved earth and heaven, that which we are, we are. One equal temper of heroic hearts, made weak by time and fate, but strong in will, to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next is the consent calendar. Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I was reflecting on that poem. I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to contract with Fire Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to continue the agreement with NBI Solutions, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for dispersment of funds from law enforcement trust time.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Data Systems Manager requesting permission to dispose of old PCs.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number five be received and filed. Authorized legislation if needed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five and authorize any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into an absentee contract.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
May the communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Square Fair, Inc., requesting an amendment to ordinance 2414.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase an emergency generator.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number eight be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to advertise and award emergency generator power phase two.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase a mower through state purchasing program.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Thank you. For those at home, this legislation is authorizing us to purchase mowers, keep our parks, reservoirs looking nice, and should not exceed $77,940, for those that are watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to submit a safety project application to ODOT.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? I just have one thing. I have been, I guess, somewhat outspoken in my dissatisfaction with roundabouts. I'm gonna withdraw, or at least remain silent on them after this evening, because in the larger scheme of things, the more important part of the Bell Fountain Avenue project is developing a process to bypass that railroad crossing. So while I'm not personally a fan of roundabouts, and maybe I'll be wrong, maybe they'll be successful, I don't think they will. But if that's the compromise that we have to make in order to try to expedite the Bell Fountain rail separation, or getting around it in an easy fashion, then I'll accept that compromise and I'll remain silent on it from this point forward. I know that I'd said in the past that I wouldn't support further legislation regarding roundabouts, but I'm not gonna be the guy that kills this project, okay? So that's, I just wanted to get that out there. I know some will look at me funny when I vote yes for the ordinance, okay? There comes a point in time where you fight your battle and you accept the fact that it's not gonna prevail. So we'll move forward with it, and I hope the project is successful. And I do want to express appreciation to ODOT, because I believe that they approached the city about these funds and the ability to coordinate this project with us. They could have looked at other projects, they could have looked at other communities in the district, and instead they chose us. So I do want to express appreciation to those at ODOT who were responsible for bringing us into this project. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion received and filed, communication number 11, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have a Public Works Committee report. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee met March 31, 2014, at 5:30 in the council conference room. The two subjects before the committee was policy for honorary street name and stormwater assessment review. All members of council and administration have received a copy of the report. I would like to make note, under the honorary street name, issues of cost was readdressed as the original draft had been prepared approximately seven years ago, showing a cost of $300, and it was redetermined under this meeting, the cost for the administration would be $450, and an additional cost of material for the signage and printing up and placement would be around $200. Under those issues, initially, only the $450 would be required for the application, which is nonrefundable. If it gets approved through the traffic committee and gets approved through council, the person that put in the request would be asked to come in and then make a payment for the material. That won't be asked until such time as it has passed. Further discussion went on to percentages versus numbers of signatures, and this report covers that we went to, per Counselor Tibbin's motion, seconded by Counselor Gordon, to from 75% to 50% plus 1. And that was passed. Then it went on to number of signatures throughout the city, which only required 5. That was increased per committee members and other councilors that were present. We felt more needed. We felt more need, input needed to be obtained. And education, Ms. Sodam brought up the history of the person being honored, and the opportunity to work maybe with lacknip and the neighborhood associations. So the number of signatures citywide was increased to 35, and it would require five signatures from each ward for a total of 35, was the reasoning behind that. Again, made by, motion made by Counselor Tevin, seconded by Counselor Gordon, and passed. The other issue was possibly eliminating the number of applicants per year, but Mr. Elstro, the Public Works Director, informed us that there had really only been two requests in the last 12 years, so that was tabled. If it becomes an issue, Mr. Elstro said he would come back to the committee if it became an issue, to address that. That motion was made then to have the law department prepare necessary legislation, making amendments to the changes per the committee, and then bring to council of the whole, hopefully for their approval at such time. We then went on to the second subject of the stormwater assessment. Mr. Elstro presented a 2013 stormwater utility report to the committee, and it was an excellent report that went on to address and list all the activities, all the issues, responsibility, and what projects have been funded under this, and how we could not have done it without this assessment, which has, I think, lessened a lot of the flooding issues in a number of areas in the city. It was always an emergency. This allows a planning process. With no further action or discussion, a motion was made by Counselor Tibbin and seconded by Counselor Gordon to adjourn, and the motion passed. The meeting was adjourned at 6:20 PM. Mr. President, I submit this report to be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve. The Public Works Committee report is given by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance 9914.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 9914 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 9914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 9914 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 114.
And ordinance amending ordinance number 2414.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that ordinance 114 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10114 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10214.
Amending ordinance 10911 to continue contracted services with MBI Solutions, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 10214 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10314.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Safety Services of Huntsville, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 10314 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10314.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Safety Services of Huntsville, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 10314 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10314 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10414.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the emergency generator power Phase Two project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 104-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Generator Systems Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 105-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10614.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a 16-foot-wide area mower for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 106-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10714.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a safety project grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 107-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Again, this area is, as President Nixon had mentioned, it involves Belle Fountain Avenue, Elm Street, Calumet, which is in the 5th Ward. It's a very extensive project, but if it helps us along with improve and get the underpass on the Elm Street, that's a step forward in addressing some issues for safety and for the movement of citizens through the city and through the east side of Lima. I'm not a big fan of the roundabout myself, but I have always supported this for the benefit of the city and for the citizens that are impacted by this issue. And I too will be supporting it and have, but again, tonight I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
Again, this project is going to make our city entrance very pleasing to the eye. I mean, when you come down Belle Fountain and you get across the tracks, you're going to be able to see this whole area change there. I do believe it's going to be a step forward. Whether the underpass comes in or not, that's another series, but I think this roundabout will be a very, very nice addition to that area for getting around for traffic. So, I'm going to support it also.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10714 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10814.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1002.
Mr. President.
Mr. Low.
I move that ordinance 10814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10814 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10914.
Enacting Chapter 10, 1272 of certified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, and amending the city zoning code for South Main Street from the Ottawa River to Forest Street as herein described.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 10914 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 10914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 10914 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Under miscellaneous business this evening, Mrs. Miles.
I am done.
You. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, I'd just like to touch on my position with labor and contracts and temporary seasonal jobs, because there's a little confusion amongst a couple of my constituents after last week's vote, and I just want to make it clear that what I have not been supporting is long-term contract jobs, but what I have been supporting, what I supported last week was a seasonal job and a temporary job. So I just kind of wanted to make that clear and publicly say where I stand on that issue. Another thing that I wanted to mention was that on May 3, 5 o'clock, the Lima Warriors will be having a football game at Elita Craft Memorial Stadium. I'd like to see a lot of our Lima residents come out and support the team. And the last item, I wanted to congratulate my middle daughter early on the same date, May 3. She'll be graduating from the University of Finley, so I'm very happy about that. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. I just want to remind people that if they are on the fence on who to vote for on May 6 with our state representative, there's going to be a get-to-know-them tomorrow at the Civic Center at 5:30 PM. So, get out, find out who you want to vote for, and participate, because that's what makes our system work, is voting. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Low.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Mr. Tevin.
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Adams.
Sorry.
Ms. Adams, stop me, I've got talk now.
Ottawa River cleanup is this Saturday, and it's from 9 to noon, April 26. You meet at the Red Cross Building on College Street and get your assignments. There will be t-shirts, they will give you hot dogs and some chips afterwards and cookie. It's a great event. I've been going to it for the last five years, and the turnout and support is wonderful, and we all benefit from this activity. And if you can and have the time, please take an interest in it. Hope Neighborhood will not be having a meeting May 6 due to the election, and if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Ms. Sodam, who I believe has got the listing, because May we have dumpsters on Saturdays, and I'd ask her in pre-council the dates for Hope Neighborhood and for Midway East, but if she has the remaining ones, that would be great information for all of us.
Mr. President?